Yeah, we can start. Okay, welcome to Town Council Meeting April the 8th. We'll call the meeting to order and stand for the singing of Oh, Canada.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you. Record of attendance, Lindsey, you're good. No absent with regrets. Any declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? And you can certainly declare at the time of the agenda item. Okay, no? Approval of agenda, any additions or deletions? Now, councillor Hatfield, did yours make it?
I don't see that, so if you want, I'll just go ahead.
Adopt a block. Okay, so under, just a second now, I've got to scroll way down on this one. Under thirteen A, we're going to put adopt a block. Any other additions or deletions? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda with the addition, please. Councillor Lesser? Second by Deputy Mayor. Any questions called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Approval of minutes, public hearing, March eleventh, please. Deputy Mayor?
Second.
Second by councillor Cleveland. Discussion, questions called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Town Council, March eleventh, please. Councillor Hatfield? Second by councillor Lesser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Town Council, March seventeenth, please. Councillor Cleveland, second by Deputy Mayor. Any discussion? Questions called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, March twenty-fifth. Councillor Hatfield?
Second.
Second by councillor Cleveland. Any discussion? Questions called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And Committee of the whole, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, please. Move by councillor Lesser, second by Deputy Mayor. Questions called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Public hearing. So, we have the Boys and Girls Club here to present. Jody? Jody Pache? Welcome.
Thank you. So, good evening. My name is Jody Pache, and I am the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club of Yarmouth. So, tonight, I would like to present to you what we see as our future in growing, but what we want to bring to the community by looking at purchasing Twenty-Fourth Street. So, we want to move towards new opportunities. Oh, I can't see. Gotcha.
There we go.
So, of course, when you think about the Boys and Girls Club, we've been here for fifty-four years. You know, started in, as a Boys Club, then went to Boys and Girls Club, and over the years, there's been different changes. And, you know, when people talk about the Boys and Girls Club, there's stories from the past, and there's stories from the present. You know, you think about childcare. We have our two successful locations at eleven Bond Street and NSCC. We do after-school programs in four of our schools, and we also do our summer day camp. But we want to move a little bit into more programming. We've been a staple in the Southend community. That's where we started, and that's where we still are. And when people talk about us, you know, we're inclusive. We're a family. We're a community. We're fun. We're safe. We're welcoming. We're well-established. And we're people who care with no judgment. But some people do forget that we are actually part of a really big national organization. And I thought it's important for everybody to realize that, because we have so many opportunities being part of this amazing national organization. I mean, we are one of the largest, we are the largest child and youth organization across the country, with over a hundred service clubs and six hundred service locations. But today, we're beginning our transition. We are opening our doors to all kids and teens, and we updated our brand to reflect that. I'd like you to meet our new logo, our new name, BGC Yarmouth, because not every boy or girl represents themselves or sees themselves as a boy and a girl. So, we're a new brand, but we're the same legacy, fifty-four years of creating opportunities for thousands of kids and teens in Yarmouth. We have been doing life-changing work, but we're really ready to do more. And of course, the question is, how? Because, our new slogan, our new belief, we see opportunity that changes everything. Twenty-Fourth Street is an opportunity that will change everything for BGC Yarmouth. We're a new brand. We have a new club idea, which means new opportunities. So, Twenty-Fourth Street is our vision for the future, to bring about change. It's to open our doors. It's to break down those barriers and provide the children and youth we serve a location where they belong, a place to grow our already existing programs, but also a place where we can do many, many more. Also, it's a place where we can partner with other child and youth services. There's many more. There's not just the Boys and Girls Club in Yarmouth. There's many organizations who are serving these youths and these children, and together, I see that we can bring a change. Twenty-Fourth Street would be that new community location, providing those children with that outside court. You know, we don't want to limit the children. We want to see these things happen, a place where they want to come, where they want to be, instead of just doing nothing. So, we're very fortunate, being part of Boys and Girls Club of Canada, because we have many programs at our fingertips. However, our key component that we're missing is a space that's ours, a space that's large enough to provide multiple services. Because if a young person needs it, our club will provide it. Through life-changing programs, community-based services, and relationships with peers and caring adults, BGC Yarmouth will help kids and teens develop the skills they need to succeed. To introduce you to some of the programming that we have the opportunity to bring to our local children and youth, I added one page of many, many, many more. Through Boys and Girls Club of Canada, they have formed many partnerships, very different communities, different organizations, corporations, to fund national programming. Things like Kid Food Nation, bringing, or Project Backpack, securing food security for the children. Power Up, so homework help, or project help, because some of these kids just can't even afford the materials to create their project. Whether it's, you know, STEM, which is this new innovation and the new thing that's coming about, they provide us with these tools, the materials, and the funding to provide these children these programs. And of course, this would be our permanent home for our summer day camp. We want to see Friday night drop-in programs now that there is no YMCA. We hear that from the kids, we just want something to do. Access to food security, youth employment opportunities is a big one. We're so fortunate every summer to be able to have our summer students do our summer day camp, to provide that leadership and mentorship. However, having this run all year long with different programming gives them the opportunity to have some employment, learn new skills, even, you know, get that first job, so that when they want to apply for something, they have something to put on their resume. The possibilities for this location and programming are endless. As a national organization, we have ambitions for the future, and here, us at BGC Yarmouth really want to adapt these. We want to become known as Canada's leading champion of children and youth. We want them to know that we know what these kids need, what these youths need, and asking us, what can we do to help? We want to provide children with that third space, not a space that's home, not a space that's school. Take the pressures out. Give them a place where they can socialize, they can play, they can learn, where they can become themselves now and grow as partners in the community as adults, a place where they feel they belong. And we will nurture Canada's next generation, because we know these youths are our next generation. We see great potential in today's youths to make a real difference in our communities and in our country. We will help them to learn the importance of participation and give them skills necessary to help change their communities for the better. Because at BGC Yarmouth, all doubt is erased, there's no fear of judgment, and a place where the word can't doesn't exist. We are fighting to make sure that no child is, or youth in Canada, is deprived of a personal opportunity. Twenty-Fourth Street is our opportunity to change, where opportunities for children and youth in Yarmouth will help open doors, break down barriers, create brighter futures, which can change everything. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to say thank you, and I'm also going to say, wow, that was wonderful. You're, you're quite the spokesperson.
Thank you.
I can feel the passion.
Yes.
And the Boys and Girls Club was my very first committee ever. I was early twenty, and Bruce Johnson recruited me. I remember that. So, thank you so much. Councillor Cleveland?
Oh, thank you. Amazing presentation, first off. Thank you. I have a specific question, more for the public, I guess, than anything else. Twenty-Fourth Street is, of course, the site of the old South Centennial School. My question is, what will happen to your location on Bond Street? You're not closing that down. You're using this as an expansion area, right?
Correct. Eleven Bond Street will remain as our main location for childcare, so our ages are three months to five years. This new location, Twenty-Fourth Street, would be for our four to twelve and up, because right now, we do have the four to twelve with our after-school. So, it'd be an extension, a new thing, but nothing will change otherwise.
Okay. And one last question, and again, it's more for public awareness than anything, but how many daycare spots do you offer at eleven Bond Street? Because it's a lot, is it not?
One hundred spaces.
Wow. Okay. Thank you very much.
Did the entire Boys and Girls Club nationally rebrand?
Yes.
That's wonderful.
It's something we've been talking, it's been in the works for a few years, and a lot of committees, a lot of feedback, a lot of, because the name had become a barrier.
Yeah. Good for you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you for the presentation. Great job, by the way. I'm glad you enjoyed, or included the courts in there. We did have a little discussion about that, and I think that's important. I love the idea of the community-based kind of, you know, supporting each other and whatnot. But when you say youth, what would be your highest level of age?
We're ready to go as high as we, whoever wants to come in. We know we'll start with the after-school, those, you know, you're up to twelve, we have those kids, but we want to bring the programs for the older ones as well.
Perfect. It's great to hear. Thank you.
Councillor Hatfield?
Great presentation, Jody. It was really awesome. And I love the rebranding, it's really forward-thinking, and I'm sure that the participants at the club will really welcome, welcome that. If, at Forbes Street, you mentioned about being able to help the youths with homework and projects and that kind of thing, so will that mean that you'll stay open a little longer and, longer, like some evening hours for those youths to come?
Yes. Our plan is to literally open first. We're definitely going to do a community survey and see what parents truly need and want. You know, the whole idea really did come about with this whole pandemic and, you know, the extension at Christmas break, and, you know, our parents going, do you have spaces? And it's, no, I'm sorry, like, we're full. So, we thought, we really need, we're ready to grow, we're ready to see this. So, we're ready to, yes, evening programs, if that's what's required, weekends. The possibilities are endless.
To look at it, and I know that the council really welcomes and are thankful that you are taking over Twenty-Fourth Street, so we're pleased with that.
Councillor Dairs?
Just simply, Jody, what a bold, bold initiative, and I can't wait to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Jody, I also want to thank for an outstanding presentation, and hearing and watching and listening to you present tonight makes me feel good about the purchase of the South Centennial School. So, and that's so beneficial in more ways, and I think you understand the other ways I'm referring to. So, thanks very much, and again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Councillor Lesser?
Thank you for the presentation, and as the mayor mentioned, you can, you can tell there's passion there in what you're doing. It's obviously a big, a big project to take on. Would your be, moving to a new loca, or adding a new location would also create more employment? Is, okay. So, actually, one of my first jobs was working for the Boys and Girls Club as well, going through university, and probably one of the most rewarding, and really set me forward to want to work in education. So, I was working at the playground in Southend, so, yeah, it's a, it's a great project, it's a great location for it, and I'll also be looking to vote in favor of it.
Good. Okay, so we're at a public hearing. Is it appropriate to ask if anybody in the audience wants to? Yeah. So, so the motion that will come to council later is that council enter, enter into a purchase and sale agreement for South Centennial School at Twenty-Fourth Street with the Boys and Girls Club, and their executive director has just presented. So, if anybody in the audience, I'll ask three times, would like to come up and, and share anything, or speak to anything that this Pache shared, then please do so. Would anybody like to speak to this? Yeah? Absolutely. Well, of course.
I didn't plan for this, but I'm new to the area, you guys know that. My kids grew up in Coal Harbour, and Boys and Girls Club was a very important part of their life. You know, they, they don't pick their neighbors, they don't pick their hockey team, they don't pick their soccer team, they don't pick their classmates, but they can pick the Boys and Girls Club, and they come from all different, they want to go, they're not because their parents signed them up, and it's, was a big part of my kids' growing up, and I wish the best.
He's got me going. I don't know what it was, what it was about that, but it just, it's, it hits close, it hits close to home. It really, it really does. I think it's straight from the heart, that's what happens. Would anybody else like to speak to this that won't make the mayor cry? And a third time, would anybody else like to speak to this? Okay, so hearing no one, we'll bring that back during the council meeting. You're certainly welcome to stay and see what happens, although if you want to place a bet right now, it would be a good time. So, thank you again for, for sharing. The public hearing number two, eight B, is the curfew bylaw, and there's, there's nothing attached here, but I do, I do have the motion that Lindsey shared with me, and it's that council repeal the curfew bylaw as recommended by the staff sergeant. So, I think basically, and CAO, you can share if you, you need to share on this one, but I think the curfew bylaw is basically at fourteen years old, and we're just looking to, you know, remove that barrier. Go ahead, CAO.
Yeah, it's essentially unconstitutional, so it's probably time to, to remove it from our, from our books, and your worship, just for everyone's reference, if they're looking for the bylaws, they're, they're further down in the business arising section where you'll actually consider the motion. So, if anybody's looking for it in reference to the hearing where we are now, they're just attached further down.
Exactly. Okay. So, would anybody like to speak to this one? I'll ask three times, would anybody like to speak to the curfew bylaw? And one more time, would anyone like to speak to the curfew bylaw? Okay, hearing no one, we will move on to eight C, which is the officer's bylaw, and that is that council approves second reading to repeal the officer's bylaw as recommended by the CAO. Did you want to share anything more about what that is?
Yes, your worship, that's a bylaw that predates the Municipal Government Act and is, is redundant or outdated at this point. So, we, we have approved a CAO policy, which is more up-to-date and, and covers, I guess, the, the need for, for the parts of this bylaw that would have been relevant are covered within that policy.
Good, thank you. Okay, would anyone like to speak to this one? I'll ask three times, would anyone like to speak to the officer's bylaw? And one more time, would anyone like to speak to this issue? Okay, hearing no one, we will deal with that later in the agenda, and I think they're upcoming right now. So, under business arising, number nine, we have the Boys and Girls Club re-South Centennial School, and as I read, the recommended motion is that council enter a purchase and sale agreement for South Centennial School at Twenty-Fourth Street with the Boys and Girls Club. Okay, CAO, did you want to speak? It's moved by councillor Lesser, second by Deputy Mayor. Go ahead.
Yeah, just wanted to, to reiterate that the, or remind council from our last meeting that the, the requirement for the hearing tonight was in relation to the fact that council felt that's possible that the sale price might be below market, and we can sell property to a not-for-profit below market as long as we have a public hearing. So, the public hearing was out of an abundance of caution, and it also gave Jody the opportunity to, to present their vision publicly, which I think was, was well worthwhile.
It really was, yeah. Okay, so it's moved and seconded. Go ahead, councillor McLeod.
The deal is consummated as you indicated, the end of May, is it, or April? End of this month. Thank you, Jody.
Jody's not waiting until the end of May. Okay, any more? Go ahead, councillor Lesser.
Yeah, I don't think there's many motions that come up that are so, I think so easy for us to vote on. We're, we're looking at the big issues in the town. One of them is a place for kids to go and daycare, a place for kids to hang out with the absence of the Y presently, and we have somebody coming to us and saying, we can fix your problem, and repurpose a piece of land that was originally a school, and then kind of keeping in the same, in the same forte of educating youth. It's one of the, it's going to be one of the easiest motions to, to vote in favor of.
I agree. Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Good stuff. Okay, nine B, the curfew bylaw, motion is that council approves second reading to repeal the curfew bylaws recommended by the staff sergeant. Councillor Dairs? And second by councillor Cleveland. Any discussion? Questions called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And nine C is that council approves second reading to repeal the officer's bylaws recommended by the CAO. Moved by councillor Dairs, second by councillor Hatfield. Discussion? Questions called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Nine D, we have council meeting bylaw amendment. The recommended motion here is that council pass first reading to amend the council meeting bylaw to change the start time of council meetings from seven thirty to six thirty PM. Moved by councillor McLeod, second by councillor Lesser. So, then, CAO, next steps on this one, when this passes, which I'm sure it will.
So, so because it is a bylaw, there will be a public hearing, much as same as we did tonight, at next month's regular council meeting. If that passes, then we'll publish as, as much in the, in the paper, and then it becomes law, and so by June, we can meet at six thirty PM for our regular council meeting. And so, Joey, take note of that, June council meeting likely to be six thirty. Six thirty.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions on that one? Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, questions called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, capital budget, so that the capital budget for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two be approved as circulated. Moved by councillor Lesser. Second by councillor Hatfield. Discussion? Did you want to say anything about the budget? I have it in front of me here.
I won't say a lot. We discussed this at Committee of the Whole, I think it was last week. The major project for, for this year will be the continuation of the sewer separation that we did on Main Street, last couple of phases, and down Glebe Street. So, we'll be going up Parade Street all the way to Pleasant, and replacing the old combined stone sewer with separate storm and sanitary sewers. And so, the benefit of that is, obviously, it takes some of the strain off of the combined system that may have caused, I don't think we had too much problem with backups in that area, but it will add capacity to the system, taking storm water directly to the harbor and only sanitary sewage to the treatment plant to be treated. So, hopefully, a large amount of rainwater that would have otherwise been treated as though it were sewage will now just go directly to the harbor and, and hopefully save us some, on some costs at the storm, at the wastewater plant.
And that's over two million dollars.
That is over two million dollars. It's about two point five million is the budget. Obviously, it will be tendered, so if the, if the budget is approved tonight, I understand from Mr. Brophy that next week the tender will be out, so they're all ready to go with that. The entire budget is, is almost three point two million dollars in capital this year. You know, we did a lot of work last year under Mr. Brophy's leadership, almost, well, I think just over eleven million dollars in capital last year, which is an astounding amount of work to get done in, in one season. So, this year, much more modest budget, but important projects and purchases nonetheless.
Absolutely. Do you have a question, councillor Lesser?
Yeah, just to, this comes up every time I leave here. I talk to one of the two people that watch me on council, or watch because I'm here, and they're trying to follow what's going on, and not realizing, and I've said, we've said it a few times, that all these documents are there for your reading online, but they don't, if you're watching on East Link, you're not going to see the document. So, I think sometimes they think we're just kind of passing these quick motions and not really reading them, but they are, they're available for the public to read, and I, I know, I keep stressing it, because I, I keep hearing it every week, that they think that the meetings go quite quick and that we're passing a lot of motions that people aren't really sure what they are.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, CAO.
Yeah, so the, to further that councillor Lesser's concern, all of these documents are on there tonight. They're actually on there when the, the agenda is issued, the Friday before, so if anybody has access to the internet, they can go on, they can see these documents, they can come to the public hearings, you know, informed, and, and even ask their councillors questions ahead of the meeting if they have concerns, and then they stay there forever. We have documents from council meetings going back over ten years now on our website that, for every, every decision that council has made. In the case of this, by- In the case of this budget, we had a special committee of the whole meeting last week where this budget was gone through in detail. And so councils had an opportunity to hear the details and to discuss with the Director of Finance. And it was recommended here tonight. So that's often the case at the council meeting is that by design, everything that comes to the council table is coming through an advisory committee, whether that's committee of the whole or planning advisory or heritage advisory. And so it's been viewed by a group of counselors and citizens in a lot of cases and then recommended to council before it gets here. And you folks have it to read. And so it seems like the process is fairly quick by the time it gets here. But I think people should know that the recommendations have been well considered, not just coming from staff, but also coming through advisory committees.
Yeah, perfectly stated. And I would say this, which confuses people too, but the shorter the council meetings, to me, reflects on exactly how prepared council was, that we have, we spent many hours reading and discussing and, you know, really asking a lot of questions, you know, emails and chats and certainly meetings. So it's a good point. Deputy? Oh, he covered it. Good, okay. All right, so the capital budget was moved and seconded. Questions called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Excellent job on that. New business, tax arrears payment arrangement policy amendment. So the recommended motion, excuse me, is that council accept the amendment to the tax arrears payment arrangements policy that includes the recalculation of monthly payments when liens are placed on the property. Okay? Moved by Deputy Mayor, second by Councilor Hatfield. Any discussion on that? Questions called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Ten B, presentation at May council. The recommended motion is that council allow the eighty-fourth independent field battery to present at May Town Council. Moved by Councilor Cleveland. Second by Councilor Lesser. Any discussion there? They have an important anniversary coming up, so they're excited. And their flag is actually flying on Water Street. Okay, questions called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Pension bylaw repeal. So the recommended motion there is that council pass first reading to repeal the pension plan bylaw as recommended by the Director of Finance. I have a question on that. Go ahead.
Sure. So the pension plan bylaw was necessary when the town of Yarmouth was the plan sponsor for defined benefit plan for its employees. Earlier this year, council or town completed the transfer of our pension plan to the provincial public service superannuation plan. So it is no longer necessary to have a bylaw on our books since we do not have a pension plan of which we are the sponsor.
Awesome. So my question was going to be why a bylaw and not a policy?
Why what, sorry?
Why a bylaw and not a policy?
That's a great question.
Seems internal.
That's a great question. And I have to say, I don't have the answer for that. The, it didn't, it wouldn't have needed to be a bylaw. It could have been a policy. But just like the council meetings bylaw, when you make it more difficult to change it, it changes less often. And so that may have been the thinking behind it.
Thank you. Okay, so we moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion or any questions for the CAO on this one? Okay. Questions being called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Ten D, SPCA animal services, that council accept the proposed agreement with the SPCA for animal services until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Do we always do like three years at a time, or?
I believe the last contract may have been three years. This one has an option to extend additional years. This contract, so first of all, the SPCA has been the provider of this service for a number of years now. We did have a brief break in service a few years back. And we've returned to the SPCA as the service provider. They provide excellent service and good reporting to the town when there are incidents. And so I have no hesitation in recommending this. There is no increase in fee. And the contract is exactly as in the past. So I urge council to accept this contract.
Good. Okay, so I guess we need the motion first. Councilor McLeod, second by Councilor Hatfield. Okay, any discussions or questions? Questions called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Are you happy, CAO? Okay, ten E, tender results, planning department truck. The recommended motion is that council award the tender for the planning department truck to Tuskegee Ford for a three-year monthly lease of five thirty-three point six three as recommended by the manager of Public Works. Okay, moved by Councilor Lesser. Are there any questions I need a seconder before you second by the deputy? Were there any questions on that?
Your worship, I can just comment on it if I may, that this is to replace an existing vehicle that through age has fallen into disrepair. The estimate to do the repairs necessary to keep the vehicle going were excessive. And so the decision was made to replace it with, through a lease. And so that is what you're considering tonight. It's a replacement vehicle.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilor McLeod. The Ford Ranger Supercab? Your light went off. Sorry.
Sorry about that.
Go ahead.
This is a lease arrangement. Just curious, I guess we've done that before. I'm trying to think, yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, for our vehicles, we have, I guess, a combination, some purchases, some leases, depending on the situation. In this case, they decided to go out for a lease and these are the results. So I wasn't privy to the discussion where they came up with that as their intention. But I trust their judgment on that.
Me too. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Okay, so we had a mover and a seconder. Any more discussion on that one? Questions called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. That's the business. Now we have reports, council advisory committees, committee of the whole, Deputy Mayor. Go ahead.
The recommended motion is that the mayor speak to the town caucus chair for the purpose of addressing the deer issue with the province.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? It's, I got emails even tonight about the deer population. So, you know, there's nothing we can do locally, but we'll have that conversation with the province. Okay, question was called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Parade Street and Haley Road intersection. And it's a recommended motion that council accept the traffic authority's recommendation and install a four-way stop at the intersection of Parade Street and Haley Road, as well as the installation of a crosswalk on Parade Street in line with the new multipurpose trail.
Second by Councilor Hatfield. Go ahead, Councilor Dairs.
Yeah, I'm prepared to support the motion. I guess my question is whether or not we should ask the traffic authority if a second driveway to the ambulance bay be permitted onto Parade Street.
Did you want to speak to, because it's going to be easier for them to get out and around with the traffic slow.
Yeah, I think we'll leave that whole issue and what the solutions might be if there's a problem to the traffic authority. We don't have to generate. But I suspect if the driveway movement was necessary or advisable, you know, he's certainly not going to make it more difficult for emergency services to operate there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, it's moved and seconded. Go ahead, Councilor McLeod.
It's such a busy intersection. And people have lifelong habits of coming and traveling up the roads. And I'm just concerned that, make sure that we have enough warning, that there's, maybe we had a warning on Brunswick Street for the second stop sign. But I think we need two, more than one warning to, I'm not, maybe I'm being over cautious. But I just want to make sure that everyone is, it hits them in the eye when they're driving. That's what I wanted to say.
And not in the fender?
Not the fender, yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
And I think there are a number of students that cross that at lunch. And, you know, it's a busy intersection. And I have talked to some people who lived around there. And although they, you know, it might be congested, they're happy to know that the safety of the students and people who use that, especially with the second period of phase two going in there. So I think that's important.
Yeah, we've got a lot of people commenting on how they, how much they use that trail. So once we add to, I mean, I was just excited to see the crosswalk, you know. But you need the four-way for the crosswalk, so.
As a guy who runs truck crossing.
Yeah.
The four-way is going to be very, very welcome.
Yeah, exactly. So it was moved and seconded. Are there any more comments? Anybody wants to share? Okay, questions called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Deputy?
Recommended motion that council endorses this, excuse me, the strategic plan of the Mariner Center.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
And that council invite the Mariner Center CEO Duram Hadib to present their strategic plan.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say, I think Duram's doing a great job. We sat in on a couple of those sessions we were invited to. And I think it's quite clear that both the committee and the Mariner Center as a whole is going in the right direction. So, and kudos to Councilor Cleveland for the work that's been done there over the last little bit. And I think this is really good.
It is. Good, do we have a mover and a seconder on that, Lindsay? Okay, we do. Any more discussion? Questions called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council continue to engage with Iris Communications for another three months regarding the fishery at a cost of twenty-one hundred dollars.
Okay. Second by Councilor Hatfield. And we have been getting stuff from them already. Well, you send it to me, make sure I read it. Okay? Go ahead.
So we'll look at this again in three months' time? Is that what the implication is of this motion?
Will we look at this again in three months? Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, depending on circumstances, yes. So all of the units, just put money into a pot? Everybody in the western region?
The same amount as we do?
It's proportional.
Yeah, so the formula for the division is it's either population and uniform assessment or population and uniform assessment and equal shares. And I don't recall which carried the day, but the two were under consideration at the time. And CAO has agreed to recommend based on one formula. And I can't recall which one it was.
But it's fair. So moved and seconded? Questions called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
And the recommended motion that council extend the purchase and sale agreement of fifty-two Parade Street to November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Second. Second by Counselor Cleveland. Go ahead.
If I may, again, in light, and again, I run into this a lot too. And it's the same thing that Counselor Lesser alluded to. CAO, if you could, could you explain that for everyone so that they understand exactly what we're doing?
Why we're extending it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So the proponent, the developer, is working through the process with both the provincial government and CMHC in order to be able to provide subsidized or affordable units, twenty-seven affordable units out of the fifty-four. In order to do that, he needs, they need, sorry, commitments from both provincial Department of Housing as well as CMHC, as I said. So they have the commitment from the provincial Department of Housing, which is a major milestone. Now, the final step is to get the letter of commitment for the obviously favorable financing from CMHC to support the affordability plan. That is in the works. And by the end of next month, they will have all of the information that's required for CMHC to consider filed and complete. And then CMHC has a, they allow themselves a lengthy review process. There's a fair amount of money involved, and they're a national organization. And so that's just the time that they allow. So out of an abundance of caution, we're extending this agreement. What we hope is, what we hope and believe is the one last time that will allow them to check that box. CMHC has expressed to me, to the program officer, how very much they appreciate Town Council's support and patience with the process because obviously this has taken a long time. And we would like to have seen it done sooner. They understand very clearly from me what our carrying cost for that building is that is hanging in the balance as they go through their lengthy process of review. So again, they very much appreciate what the town has done to step up the partner for this particular project. So I think the extension is, I say hopefully, I'm ninety-nine percent sure this is the last one, based on, you know, my emphatic urging that we get this done by that deadline. They told me when it would be done. So that's why I'm recommending that extension to you is because I don't want to come back and compliment you for your patience anymore. I want to be done with this. So I'm very, very positive. The developer is very anxious. They see what's going on in the housing market here and how, and they have done a website which has been circulated through social media. They have been overwhelmed by the support, the response they've received, both in terms of people wanting to be able to get an apartment there, but also people who are very pleased that somebody like these developers are stepping up to repurpose a building that has played an important part in generations of Yarmouthians in their youth. So, yeah, it's a good news story. We just need to get to the final chapter. And I think we're, I think we're about to embark on that.
Thank you.
Counselor Lesser?
Yeah, the website that the CAO was referring to is yarmouthschoolproject.com. And it's, citizens should be going on there to put their name on the list if they're interested in apartments. We know there's shortage of apartments, and that's the place that you would contact. And there's also some interesting things happening. They're going to, they're going to, they're saying they're going to release some virtual tours. And you can also help name the building, which is quite neat, where many people in Yarmouth went through that school. So check out the website, yarmouthschoolproject.com.
Thank you. Okay, so moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Questions called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, deputy. Citizen Advisory Committee's Planning Advisory, that's you, Councilor McLeod.
I want to move a motion to recommend to council that we amend both the municipal planning strategy and the land use by law to rezone sixty-one Waverly Street. Although my screen went blank. From a commercial industrial C-one zone to a medium-density residential R-two zone as outlined in our planner's report.
So moved. Second by Counselor Lesser. Any discussion or any questions for Jim?
Our planner is here also, if there's any more de-questions.
Go ahead, Counselor Lesser.
I'd like to see some of these land use changing, especially in the need of more housing, I guess, for the town. Is there any, do we have any idea if there's a proposed project for that? Or is it something that can even be talked about? Like, is there somebody looking at developing that into something? Or is that something that's kind of off record, or?
We have an application for a single residential home at this point. But the Planning Advisory Committee has decided upon recent suggestion, our planner's suggestion, that we rezone it from our one, that we just rezone it to our three, which allows for more housing on that property. But at this point, as far as I know, Derek, that the, it's set up for a single residential.
Good. Any more discussion? Call for the question. All the, oh, sorry, Reese, did you?
I have an [inaudible].
Sure, come on up.
Just, yeah, just clarifying Counselor Lesser's point there. So the applicant is interested in putting a single-family dwelling on the lot, but the thing with the medium-density residential zone is it permits R1 uses, so it permits family, single-dwelling uses also. But in the future, he's looking maybe to put more units on the lot, but what that provides, it's, the lot itself is 35,000 square feet, so it provides a lot of opportunity for more units on the lot. So if he decides to expand, put more units in the lot, he can go up to a maximum of six units. So that's the purpose of rezoning it to an R2 instead of R1. Yep.
Thank you, Reese. Okay, any more discussion or questions? Questions called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Reports for information are attached. I don't have a report this month. Questions for committee chairs? Anybody have anything? I do want to say, Counselor Hatfield, thank you for the yellow benches. The community's in blue. Everywhere we go, people are sitting on them. Like, it's, they're not just pretty, people are actually sitting on them. Did you want to share about that?
Yes, and I, we even seen somebody, I think, down in Heritage Park yesterday, having a picnic at their bench, right, using the little table in between, so that was really good. So they're nice and bright, and I think they stand out, and people are enjoying them, so.
Wonderful. Counselor Lesser?
Yeah, they seem to have overtaken the town. They're everywhere, which is really nice, and they're bright. Any idea, well, I'm sure you have an idea, how many of them have been put out?
We put out eight.
So any more comment?
Well, if we, the budget allows. We used up our budget for last year, and we bought benches for people to enjoy.
You know, that's, that's up. There's the budget, and then there's the case of, you know, people wanting to donate benches to, you know, in memory of loved ones or something like that. So if you're interested in that, it's something you could, they could do that, right? Yes, we have the community donations, and then you just basically say, this is what I would like my money to go towards. Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, exactly. I was just going to speak to that, but they do, the town has the community asset donation, and so people can donate money in memory of people, or just you make a donation, and when it reaches a certain amount, that funds can be used to purchase something for the town, or some, a person can actually make a donation of a bench or a tree or whatever in memory of somebody in the town. We'll make all the arrangements and place it in wherever is decided. So it is a wonderful program, and we do have some benches around town with people's names in memory, so, thank you.
I'd love to see at least 20 more of those yellow benches. Yeah, okay. Any questions for committee chairs otherwise? Or good? Okay, additions? And we have one, and that's you, Counselor. Go ahead.
Yes, this came actually from Communities in Bloom meeting yesterday, and so I'd like to make a motion that the town of Yarmouth proclaim April the 22nd, which is Earth Day, to May the 13th, 2021, as adopt a block cleanup weeks.
Okay.
Second.
Moved, seconded by Counselor Cleveland. Go ahead, Counselor Dares.
Yeah, just a quick correction on the date. I believe we extended it to May 15th.
Oh, sorry.
To include the Saturday.
Yeah, you're right.
Excellent.
I couldn't, I couldn't read my writing. Yeah, and so we're encouraging individuals and families and businesses and groups to get out and adopt a block, choose which area you would like to do, and register it with Waste Check. And it is, you don't have to register it, but it is really important that you, helpful if you do, just call Waste Check office or go online and register your block so that it gets counted in, for the Great Nova Scotia Pick Me Up campaign. So there's lots of litter around right now, and it's just a good thing to do in the evening. Tonight was a beautiful evening to get out and do that. And we're asking that those three weeks be identified for that, but certainly people can start before, and they can certainly continue after. So we just appreciate everybody who does, do pick up some litter and help clean up the town.
So I have a question about Waste Check. They used to, I don't know if they do now, they hand out the gloves and if you want bags, go ahead.
Yes. They do, if you call Waste Check, they do have the bags and gloves, and actually, Communities in Bloom today, Counselor Dares and I, and myself, went out and we purchased 20 of the pickup sticks so that people, so if people have difficulty bending over, and because it, as you get old, it does, it is hard on the back, so you can borrow those from Waste Check. So there are some out there for them. So just call Amy at Waste Check, and she'll take care of you.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so the motion was moved and seconded. Any more discussion on this? Questions called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Approval of invoices, please.
Just quickly.
Yes.
Just wanted to confirm that that will be advertised?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll look at you. And to make sure we include like the gloves and Amy's number, he'll have all that. Yeah, absolutely. Good, thanks for that. Okay, approval of invoices, please. Motion to approve them. You have to, I already signed. Go ahead. Thank you, Counselor McLeod. Seconded by Deputy Mayor. Any more discussion?
So tempting to vote no.
Might be your paycheck.
That's true.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. And the date of the next meeting is May the 13th at 7:30. So we know, go ahead, CAO.
Yeah, your worship, I, I'm not sure we actually got a motion on item 10C.
Oh, 10C, yes.
Yeah, we got into a discussion. I think we proceeded without getting a motion, so if you don't mind.
My apology, yes. So 10C, is it the pension bylaw one? Okay, so moved by Counselor Lesser, seconded by the Deputy Mayor. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Alrighty, approval of invoice, date of next meeting, and do we have in camera?
I don't have that in camera.
Okay, so a motion to adjourn.
What?
Thank you. Okay, so we're adjourning now, but we are actually going to have the water utility meeting. Deputy, do you want to just?